It is six P M. I will call the City of Alligan City Council Meeting to order. Joel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Zeder.
Seated.
Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Canales.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Present.
Mayor Protem Morgan. Mayor Perrigo.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Morgan.
Support.
Okay, there is a motion on the table and it has been supported. All those in favor of excusing Mayor Protem Morgan, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Okay, agenda. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would be, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Agenda item number four is Approval of Agenda for A. Approval of the amended regular council meeting agenda for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. In front of you, council should be an amended agenda.
Approval of the amended agenda.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor of approving the amended regular council meeting agenda for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Agenda item number five is Approval of Minutes. Five A. Approval of the regular council meeting minutes from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. I assume you've all reviewed these. Can I get a motion?
I will make the motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes for March twenty-fourth.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of approving the regular council meeting minutes for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Five B is Approval of the Special Council Meeting Minutes from April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I can motion to approve the special council minutes from April nine.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of approving the special council meeting minutes from April ninth, twenty twenty-five, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Five C is Approval of the Special Council Meeting Minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
For the one that's printed, it states Wednesday. It should be Thursday.
Otherwise, you would approve it as written with that change? And that is your motion to approve with that change?
It is.
Can I get a second?
I'll support.
All right. It's been moved and supported to approve the special council meeting minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty-five, with the date changed stating Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. All right. We're going to move down to Agenda Item Number Six, which is Special Presentations and Recognizations by Mayor or Council. Under Six A, we have Statements from the City Manager and the Police Chief. And Joel, are you going first?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to take a few minutes to provide some context for what you may be hearing regarding our budget process and the need to identify five hundred thousand dollars a year in our city general fund so we can afford necessary street improvements in our neighborhoods. Chief Gibson will be speaking tonight to share his thoughts as well. As with so many other Michigan municipalities, the City of Alligan is facing budget challenges. We are facing rising costs from everything, from paving roads and managing our water system to paying for employee health benefits and maintaining our parks. We are also watching as federal grants that benefit our city continue to be at risk. The City of Alligan has a backlog of infrastructure projects we need to tackle over the next decade. These include: Resurfacing or reconstructing twenty percent of our roads and streets to maintain a safe driving conditions for residents and visitors. Replacing lead water service lines, which is being mandated by the EPA and the state. Investing in our water treatment facilities to ensure we can deliver safe, clean, P Phos-free drinking water to residents. Replacing the condemned Trestle Trail Bridge, which will cost approximately one million dollars. Making improvements to Rossman Park, which will cost approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Managing annual maintenance programs to keep the city-owned Regent Theater and Griswold Auditorium operating smoothly and safely. Handling annual maintenance and periodic upgrades for our ten city-owned parks. The total cost for these projects for the next ten years in our streets funds account alone is approximately fourteen point two million dollars, which simply isn't available in our current budget. As we look at our budget, City Council has asked staff to come up with a plan to pay for these infrastructure projects, which we will need to sell bonds in order to complete. We estimate we need an average of five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years to finance the total initial projects. In years six through ten, it's anticipated we will need an additional five hundred thousand for a total of one million annually to finance all of these projects at that time. This would cover the costs of paying back the bonds. We've considered a number of options, including trimming expenses across the board. Our current budget is already bare bones, and we don't have enough to realize the cost savings needed. I've decided I won't take a pay increase for the upcoming year. Asking residents for an additional millage, the City of Alligan is already one of the highest tax municipalities in the county. I don't believe we, I don't believe the residents will approve adding to the current sixteen point three six eight millage rate we currently assess on our residents. Borrowing from the water and sewer funds. While it looks like there might be a surplus in this fund, under Michigan law, we can't borrow from this fund to support police or other general government services. Contracting with Alligan County for our police services is an approach that will allow us to save money while maintaining the high level of public safety our residents have come to know and expect. While we are continuing to look to reduce our overall expenses, City Council has already been presented with the possibility of contracting with the county for police services. This presentation occurred last Thursday night, as council is well aware. A current proposal could look like this. We've had preliminary discussions with Alligan County to see what an arrangement would look like. And it is my intent that each officer and support staff be given the opportunity to land at the Alligan County Sheriff's Department. Again, those are preliminary discussions we have had. We recognize some people will worry about a decline in service if we make this change. The city will have protections in place similar to what we do with our fire services. This will spell out our expectations of service levels in terms of response times, patrols on the road, and assistance with code enforcement. West Michigan municipalities such as Hudsonville, Spring Lake, Coopersville, Georgetown Township, Fenville, and Sagatuck have been contracting for public safety services with Ottawa and Alligan Counties with success. Managers in these communities have told me residents and businesses are seeing similar road patrols and response times after the switch, which has saved each municipality hundreds of thousands of dollars. For the City of Alligan, we anticipate it would be nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings in the first year of the switch and then ongoing savings of five hundred thousand a year thereafter. We've had nearly a decade of success with our fire services being contracted to the Alligan Fire District. We recognize this is not simply a math equation. It's not just what color uniform an officer will put on in the morning. We know this will have a major impact on each member of the department and our entire community. For me, this has been a real struggle. Our police department is the most professional team I have worked with in my twenty-five years in local government and eight years as a city manager for the City of Alligan. They are all top-notch individuals and function extremely well together as a team. All are local graduates and most have decades of service with us. All are known and respected in our community. This plan would allow them to continue to serve our community, ensuring we can maintain a high level of trust and quality service with officers safeguarding the city. It would also allow us to realize significant savings and reinvest those dollars in our community to tackle much-needed infrastructure projects. This is certainly not a done deal. We are in the exploratory stages of discussion with City Council, who will make the final decision. Of course, we are open to other paths. In the coming weeks, we are planning to listen to our community to hear directly from you. If the community is adamant about retaining a locally-controlled police department, we could look at the possibility of a voter-approved millage. Nothing is off the table at this point. The intent was to bring this conversation to the forefront once we had more information to share. I regret that information was shared prematurely and caused undue stress and uncertainty to all parties. I commit to being transparent during the remainder of this process. And now I'm going to invite Chief Gibson to the podium to say a few words.
So we had a department meeting at five o'clock where I shared the news with everybody. And I've had the misfortune of giving bad information to people in the past. This was a tough one. We understand it's early in the process, but any time that you hear that your position may be in jeopardy, you can imagine that the folks are upset. I gave them the information that Joel just provided. We discussed it. And I don't know how to quantify what we do on a relationship level, a community level, our service that we provide. How do I quantify that in a number? I just, I don't know how to do that. I can tell you that, to Joel's point, nine out of the ten employees graduated from here. You know, we talk about community a lot. We've been serving the community for decades. And it's, it's hard to be in this scenario. I mean, you hear Joel, and I appreciate him saying how other departments say how exemplary we are. We're the most professional group he's worked with in his twenty-five years, and yet here I stand at this podium, not thinking that I would have had to do this. And we're not there, right? But I would invite any of you that have any questions of me that deal with more personal levels as far as how this would affect your police officers. I mean, it's nice that the preliminary discussion says that, you know, we would reach out to the Sheriff's Department, we would go there. But the reality of that is, is that you'd probably get very few of us that would actually be patrolling here. They're a union shop. We would all become bottom of the seniority there. Which, at the end of the day, isn't your problem, but I want you to see the personal side of it. Many of their benefits and their pay and everything would be significantly different than it is now, and that's not what they would have expected. We've made concessions in the past with past contracts, working with Joel and city staff. Defined benefit, which is the pension, is no longer for new employees. Defined benefit employees contribute towards their pension now. I don't believe, I don't think Tracy was on when I got promoted. Maybe you were. I can't remember. None of, were you? So, none of the rest of you were on city council when I got promoted, but part of that process was I had to make concessions too. So I was forty-four at the time, and Joel said that he wanted to switch me to a defined contribution plan. He and I had a discussion. I said, I can't change my investments to make up for that many years of loss. So I negotiated till fifty. Still lost five years. So come July, I no longer accrue a pension. But none of you, if you were on council, Tracy's on councils, I didn't come here and complain about that. I made a personal decision that was best for me and my family. None of these guys are going to be able to make decisions that can change that for them. Going to the Sheriff's Department, not, I'm not, you'll not hear me bash the Sheriff's Department to the side of the other. It's just that the reality is they would now become lowest seniority, probably all going to nights. And I just don't think that we do that to a group of people that we've just said is the most professional group that we've worked with and that has worked with the community and established relationships. I would encourage you to reach out to your friends, neighbors, business owners, and see what they say. With me, I'm your employee. If I don't perform to the level that you want, you can do something about it. The Sheriff's Department, you'll now be having a sheriff that's an elected official. If you, if we go through with this, and I, I hate hyperbole and talking absolutes, but if, if we do this and we terminate our police department and sell that building, there's no going back. For anybody that sits in your seats in the future. And I've, I've served on a board for six years. I, I get having to sit and listen to hard conversations. But I wouldn't be doing my officers a service if I didn't come up and advocate for them. I would ask also, ask the Sheriff's Department if they want to police the city. And I think you're going to get the answer that they do not. And I, pardon me, July, he and I, this is new stuff, so I didn't get to delve into it as much as I wanted to, but I think the contract that he had is a seventy-five, twenty-five contract. That's usually what they do. It, it, let me throw it out there and say I may be wrong, but I think what those numbers were was a seventy-five, twenty-five contract, because that's what they do a lot of times, meaning the municipality township pays seventy-five percent, county pays twenty-five percent. Let's say this would go to your vote. Eventually, it has to go to the Board of Commissioners too, and I don't know why they would agree to pay twenty-five percent for nine positions in the town that's already staffed. And I probably shouldn't speak for them, but I was just thinking out loud, looking at that, like, and I would really, and I know Joel's good with numbers, I'd like us to look at those numbers more closely too, on, is it really five hundred thousand dollars that would be saving? And is the juice worth that squeeze? Because there's other numbers that, you know, like in that proposal that said forty-five thousand dollars for overtime. We're not going to have, it's going to be more than forty-five thousand dollars for overtime. It looked like a quick plug of numbers that needs to be looked at more. Motor vehicle pool wasn't in there. Pension payment wasn't in there. But I, I would just like to have more conversations. And please, any of you, reach out to me if you wish to discuss things. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole too much of, I've tried to say that, you know, how big of a deal this would be for the folks behind me. To go from where they're at now to all of a sudden having this big change that none of us want and none of us expected. And I don't want to say that I think that we deserve, because we don't deserve it. And I get the money part. I'm not lost on it. But I don't think that the brunt of that comes on one of your best departments and your best employees. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move down to Agenda Item Six B, which is a twenty twenty-five Arbor Day proclamation. All right. So whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products and byproducts. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the City of Alligan has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the past thirty-nine years and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Tracy Perrigo, Mayor of the City of Alligan, do hereby proclaim the last Friday in the month of April as Arbor Day in the City of Alligan. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty-five. All right. I'm going to skip down to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Public Hearings and Adoption of Ordinance. Eight A is a public hearing and adoption of Resolution twenty-five twelve regarding the confirmation of the summer twenty twenty-five special assessment role.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, you are going to be adopting Resolution twenty-five point one two, which is our special assessment role, which recognizes all the unpaid invoices due to the City of Alligan as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is, I believe, the third or fourth meeting we've had this discussion. Council, you'll recall, this list started much longer. And then over the past three or four months, as we've published this list in the paper, reached out to the individual property owners, letting know it would go under their taxes. One by one, they came in and paid their bills. This is the remaining amount. So on the screen and in your report, there's the list of properties that still owe invoices from calendar year twenty twenty-four. Tonight's public hearing is an opportunity for any of these organizations or property owners to dispute their placement on this role. And then after the public hearing, you will go ahead and adopt that resolution. If any of these property owners pay their disputed amount, or not disputed amount, but their total assessment by June thirtieth, it will not go under their taxes. So. Any questions for staff?
No. All right. At six twenty-one, I will open the public hearing regarding adoption of Resolution twenty-five twelve. If you have a public comment on this agenda item, please approach the podium and state your name and address. I do not see anybody coming forward with a comment on the adoption of Resolution twenty-five twelve, so I will go ahead and close the public comment. All right. This does require a motion.
Yeah, you can adopt the resolution.
Can I get a motion for adopting?
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five point one two.
Second.
All right. It has been moved and supported to adopt Resolution twenty-five twelve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. All right. Agenda Item Number Nine is the first of two public comments that we hold during regular council meetings. If you have a public comment for something that is on the agenda or not on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address, and we do limit this to three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Beltman, District Four Commissioner. First and foremost, I want to address the topic of the police department. I want to reassure the police department that when Joel says there were preliminary discussions, they were very preliminary. That was with county, with city staff, county staff, and I believe the Sheriff's Department. Nothing has been talked about to the Board of Commissioners. It was actually kept kind of on the down low because it wasn't to be publicly talked about. But I can assure the police department that the Board of Commissioners has not even looked at this yet. And also, I'm not a hundred percent sure with the level of service that you're getting from the police force, if there's going to be any savings at all to the city. Without looking at it, I, I don't know, but, but if you pay for a certain level of service, it's hard to, to do much better on that. So I just wanted to get that out. I'll certainly talk to my fellow commissioners, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of hurdles that would have to be overcome before that happens. So I guess, before I go on, is there any questions on that?
No, but if there is, we will.
Okay, yeah. Please, please feel free to reach out to me and go from there. And that goes for anybody else as well. One other noteworthy thing I wanted to point out. At our last commissioners' meeting, we raised the Drain Commissioners budget, or the Drain Commission Revolving Fund, not the budget, but the revolving fund, from two hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that scares everybody. Why such a big increase? Basically, that is a piggy bank that the Drain Commission can use throughout the year for drain work throughout the county. They can pay the contractor for doing work on a ditch or drain, and then that is paid back into that fund at tax time through tax assessments. So it's not out of the county budget. It's not direct out of taxpayer money. It's paid back through, through assessments from the Drain Office. So that's a noteworthy thing, because that gets everybody's attention. So any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, I got some public comment, I can't go to the podium and stand and talk, and it's not hopefully, I'm floating up here. I gave you people an old list.
Can you state your name, please? State your name.
My name, Daniel Saltwell, I live on Main Street, seven-nine-nine Main Street. And my complaint is about the traffic on Main Street. And gosh almighty, it's like, I understand everybody's broke. Got a gold mine right there at Summit Drive. It's like, you know what, the traffic is just don't throw like a racetrack. If you just arrange some darn tickets, you generate more cash than you realize. People will slow down. It's darn, it's tough as a joke, it's like, yes, it's on the transit zone. Ridiculous. You know what? If you knew what the transit zone was, it doesn't exist, but you use it the wrong way. Slow down, the traffic, write some tickets. That's all I got to say.
All right. Is there any other public comments for tonight?
Paula Mintec, three-fifty Kalamazoo Street. This is on a real light note, but I just, first of all, wanna thank the city, because the Arts Council is gonna hold a concert at the Griswold on May fourth, and Parker is working with us and the city in that, giving us some breaks. We're a nonprofit, so we can hold the concert, and Downtown Alleghan Group can sell beverages, which then, you guys know what they, the kinds of things they do. I don't know if the audience does, but Downtown Alleghan Group does all kinds of things for the city, like for New Year's Eve, for, you know, all kinds of events, excuse me, and they have to raise funds. So the hard part for us, and I stuck my neck out to get this concert, this group to come, and I kinda thought ticket sales would go faster than they have. We've almost covered our costs, but not quite yet. We are hoping to do more than cover our costs, because any net proceeds will go towards summer arts camp scholarships for area high school students. The Arts Council has given thousands and thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars over probably twenty years. Every spring, we give a few thousand to kids from Atsigo, Alleghan, Hopkins. It all depends who applies for them. And this, this, we used to do the beverages for cabaret, and that's how we got the money to do these scholarships. And as you know, cabaret band doesn't do, do their thing anymore. So we are, we thought if we could do a concert that would bring people from Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids into Alleghan and see how cool Alleghan is and our wonderful Griswold auditorium, we could make it an annual event that the Downtown Alleghan Group could do with us. But if it's just barely, if we just don't make money, break even, it's not worth the worry I've had, the sleepless nights selling, about selling the tickets. So I'm just here to get the word out and hope, invite all the council members to attend, because this is an incredible group. They're on tour across the country. I reached out to them on Instagram, because I'm a fan, and said, hey, you have a couple nights after your Ann Arbor show, would you come to the west side of the state? And they said, sure. And this is their only concert in all of west Michigan. They're not going to Grand Rapids or Kalamazoo or Traverse City. So I thought, you know, it'd be fun to have them come here. I have seventeen seconds, so all I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give each one of you a little thing with info, so you can really buy your tickets. If anyone out there wants it, I'll hand you one real fast. So here they are. There's just info. But I, I'm just so excited, I think there, there are people already who bought tickets from outside Alleghan, and I think they will come and eat dinner here and see our cool auditorium. And so I'm just, you know, all of them. So please, oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Hi, neighbor. So anyway, anybody want?
All right. Paula, can I just have you, I, I know you have a lot to say, and I love what you have to say, but if you can put them also on the back table. Is there any other public comment? I see no other public comment at this time, so I will move on to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is Presentations and Reports from Government Agencies, Consultants, or Special Committees. And Ten A is a presentation from the Alleghan County Legal Assistance Center.
Good evening, Mayor Perrigo, council members, Manager Di, Assistant Manager Johnson, and residents of the City of Alleghan. My name is Linda Teter, and I am here on behalf of the Alleghan County Legal Assistance Center. My position with the organization is Director of Finance and Fundraising. The mission and purpose of the organization is to provide free legal assistance to all residents of Alleghan County and persons with civil cases in Alleghan County courts. We are now located on the first floor of the Alleghan County Courthouse. Due to the renovation, we now have that first floor spot. The goal is to make a difference in people's daily lives, children, families, individuals, and to help the courts with their process. Legal assistance includes providing tools and resources and information to assist Alleghan County residents to represent themselves in civil cases. These matters might include changes in custody, parenting time, child support, probate matters such as guardianships and informal estates, district court matters such as landlord-tenant, small claims, garnishments, divorces, and new custody, personal protection orders, and set-asides. Hourly rates for attorneys now in Alleghan County can be between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred dollars an hour. Seventy-two percent of the City of Alleghan residents assisted have income under forty thousand dollars. So these are Alice households, who often have limited savings to pay for unexpected expenses, such as attorney fees, and thank you, Manager Di, for putting those up. We do not provide legal advice. We are not attorneys. But we do have an attorney referral list, that if we do believe that someone needs legal assistance, or legal advice, that we provide that resource. The goal for the Alleghan County staff and interns and volunteers is to assist persons who request legal assistance in one of three ways. At the Alleghan County Office, in the courthouse, by phone, by Zoom. Our staff are well-trained. We have interns and volunteers to provide hands-on assistance to make sure that the person understands how to complete state court administrative office-approved forms, how and where to file, how to serve the other person, and information about the next steps in the court process. I just provided Chief Gibson with some of our rack cards, which you have a copy of, to provide in the middle of the night when you know that it's a civil matter, the officer does, and are looking for a, a place for people to get some assistance, and that is the Legal Assistance Center. Manager Di has put up here, so between January third, twenty-twenty-four, and March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, there were three-hundred-and-thirty-eight City of Alleghan residents who requested assistance, and you can see the breakdown by the categories, by probate and new divorce, existing divorce, et cetera. So we're glad that your residents are using the Legal Assistance Center. Assisted, we assisted people from all over Alleghan County, but there is about twenty percent of people who are, you'll, you would see if you had my, are overall, that are not from Alleghan County. These are persons who had a case, have a case in Alleghan County, perhaps lived here and moved to a contiguous county, they can't switch the case to Alleghan County. Or the other person lives in, in Alleghan County, and the, therefore, we would assist, we would assist them. It's free to everyone. However, courts do require copies to be filed with the court and copies to serve the other party. So we do charge twenty-five cents a page for copies. However, there's an option for people to make their copies at home, or often, people will go to the library. We do sell divorce packets and custody packets for twenty-five dollars cash, twenty-six dollars charge. People can come back to the Legal Assistance Center as many times as they need to during their case. Commissioner Beltman has left, but just to say that Alleghan County provides the space, telephone, internet, and facility support. The budget for the organization is a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, which includes five part-time staff. We also have two interns that receive a, a small stipend for each semester. So our funding comes from grants, sale of packets and copies, individual donations, United Way and Alleghan County Community Foundation support. We right now have thirteen municipal contracts with municipalities throughout Alleghan County. So I'm asking that the City Council consider a contract for legal services for Alleghan, City of Alleghan residents, and look forward to meeting with Manager Di with regards to this contract. Also, I would ask that you would put some information about the Legal Assistance Center up on your city website. I do have a PDF of our brochure that could be uploaded to your website easily. I will entertain, Mayor, any questions or comments that you have.
Not at this time, but thank you.
Thank you for having me here this evening.
For the information.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move down to Agenda Item Number Eleven, which is Reports from Boards, Commissions, and City Offices. Eleven A is, oh, sorry. Eleven A one is a review of the April Airport Advisory Board Meeting Minutes. And Joel, are you gonna take that?
Sure, yeah, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Morgan is the council member assigned to that committee, but he was not able to attend this most recent meeting. At the Airport Advisory Board, they reviewed Airport Capital Improvement Plan, which Council, you also saw a copy of the plan for fiscal year twenty-six last week. They talked about additional federal or state grant programs that might be out there, and so a handful of the board members mentioned that they would contact their legislators and representatives to see what other funding might be available for the airport. They talked about increasing fuel sales by promoting and marketing the airport and the fuel price on for flight. We already do that, so we verified that that's already done. And then they got into a discussion to have more social events out at the airport, which is something that, you know, they have off and on in the past years. And then they talked about pappy lights, and why are they off? And it's because we have obstruction in the lighting system that is being taken care of as part of our capital improvement plan. Any questions on what happened at the Airport Board or Advisory Board? Thank you.
All right, eleven A two is the April Downtown Development Authority Meeting Minutes, which is, the update will be from me. The Board received project updates about Mahan Park, the Water Street and Hubbard Street parking lots, the Wayfinding signage update. We covered the DDA budget as well. And then also covered the Downtown Lowdown, which is the once-a-month, right, correct, merchant meeting for our downtown business owners. Any questions?
Quick question. I don't know if I'm wrong on this, but I saw, I thought two days before they tore up the Water Street parking lot, there was fresh asphalt patching. Who would have paid for that? And how did, was that correct?
I, I don't know what you're referring to, Councilmember Walker. Do you have pictures or anything? I'll give you a chat to our DPW and see if, if a couple of the guys that, I mean, we, we have a patching crew, and it's patching season right now. You know, they're going around, because we're going from winter into spring, filling in potholes. I will see if, you know, somehow they accidentally pulled in there and threw some asphalt down.
I didn't know if it was a private thing with the.
Hopefully, it's not a private thing, it's a city-owned parking lot, and you shouldn't do improvements on public property if you're in the city, so. But I can go ahead, and now you reach out.
It, who's responsible for the patching with that little strip that's right next to bumper-to-bumper and the other guy?
Yeah, thank you, that helps clarify a little bit. So the city owns and maintains the entirety of that parking lot, except for that strip of parking that directly abuts Meyer's Auto Value and Norwood's Auto. Okay, then it's a good chance that they probably had something scheduled. I know that they were made aware of the improvements that were going to happen in that area a few weeks in advance, but I don't know when exactly that, that patching may have occurred. But, but as part of this improvement project, we are repairing, resurfacing that section of parking as well, just so it doesn't look like we've left that section out. So although the city doesn't own that little stretch of parking, it's all being included as part of this project.
All right, Agenda Item Number Eleven A three is the Review of the April Public Spaces Commission Meeting Minutes, and it looks like Assistant City Manager Johnson?
Yes, I will take this one. Councilmember Canales is the councilperson that sits on this board, but because the meeting happened on the same night that you all had your Wednesday night budget session, he was not present. So we met and talked about the potential for pollinator gardens in the City of Alleghan, specifically at the Alleghan Sports Complex. There's an old practice football field there that is no longer used or maintained. And so the, the Board has hopes to kind of have that be a pilot project for further gardens throughout the city. The Board also received an update on the status of the Mahan Park project. Things are going very smoothly there and are expected to wrap up in time for that June thirtieth completion date. And then Board Member Peter Savage requested that the plans for that park be posted in the lobby, which they are now. You can see that the Mahan Park plans and the Hubbard Street parking lot improvement project plans are posted in the lobby, which is a good idea, that was something that we did during our Streetscape project, but just hadn't posted yet for these current projects, so they live in the lobby here at City Hall now. We also had some updates from the Friends of Oakwood Cemetery Group, that Board Member Peter Savage is a part of, regarding a Civil War Veteran Dedication coming up on Saturday, May third, at Oakwood Cemetery that the Friends Group is overseeing. Six Civil War veterans who were laid to rest and marked graves will have a formal dedication on Saturday, May third. And then the Living History Cemetery Tour that is coming up on May thirtieth and thirty-first will be held at Oakwood Cemetery. And yeah, as Joel whispered in my ear, the tickets for that event are on sale online, and then they will be available at City Hall shortly. There were a number of trees that were damaged during the storm that happened on March thirtieth. I updated the Board on a couple of those that fell within city parks. And then we let them know about the Arbor Day Celebration coming up on the twenty-fifth, which the Mayor read a proclamation for earlier, so. And that was about that.
All right, thank you. All right, eleven A four is a review of the April Positively Alleghan Meeting Minute, and Councilmember Hooker?
Thank you. So we appointed, the Board appointed two new members. That brought us to a full Board of Nine for the first time, and I don't, what did you say, five years?
A while.
A while, okay. So we have a full Positively Alleghan Board. We went over the summer and fall event planning. We got to review the lineup for the bands and the fork-in-the-road trucks, which, just so y'all know, there's some really cool-looking new ones that are on there, so check it out. We went over the budget for Bridge Fest and discussed a new event that will be happening in the fall, October third and fourth, which is Hoot and Howl. And then we approved a couple of liquor licenses, one for the Wildwoods Concert on May fourth, and then a comedy stand-up show that will be in November. I think that was it.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move down to Agenda Item Eleven D, which is Public Works. Eleven D one is a request to approve a change to PO twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero-two with site work solutions for various improvements to the existing donor wall of the Mahan Park in the amount of eight thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the Mahan Park Improvement Project is moving along, we have noticed damage to the donor wall that was covered up by landscaping previously. And then. And then on top of each of those, what am I called? Towers on that wall are missing spheres as well. So the subcontractor reached out to us and said, hey, we can go ahead, clean up this brick wall, replace all of the limestone capping, including the missing spheres, and kind of return it back to its old glory. Since we are investing, you know, over $400,000 in this project for the community, we felt like we should really address this really small portion of this improvement project. So everything kind of pops, you know, in July when it opens up to the public. It is a change order, so we need to bring this to council for your approval.
All right, council, can I get a motion? Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and supported, and now we can have comments and discussion?
I did see, I wanted to see what that looked like because of the latest, latest events with cold concrete we were made aware of. And it does look bad. It's, I agree. It's not right to keep that looking like that way. But why wouldn't SWS take a little responsibility for not taking care of their subcontractor cold concrete? Or not following up on their use of cement?
Sure, real quick, I don't want to conflate the two issues.
Right, this is a separate issue.
This is Masonry Arts Company is the subcontractor that's doing the mason work, not cold concrete.
Maybe SWS should split it with us instead of General Contract.
Just a quick reminder, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Walker, if you could use your microphone?
Well, that's just my thought.
Sure.
Any other comments, discussion about this? All right, so there is a motion on the table to approve a change to PO 25-0802. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. 11D2 is a request to approve a change to PO 25-0801 with Milbacher and Sons to replace the concrete parkway along Chestnut Street next to the Allegan City Hall, not to exceed an amount of $20,000.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we are moving forward with the Hubbard Street parking lot project, this is a sidebar here that extends just north of the curb cut that's being replaced as part of that project where the alleyway currently is. So that gray shaded area just south of that yellow shaded polygon is going to be replaced. Upon further inspection of that concrete curb area, parkway, depending on the verbiage you would like to use, that is a tripping hazard. It is uneven. It is unsightly. Make, Milbacher and Sons has given us an estimate to replace that with a lawn area, soften it up, green it up some. It's a not-to-exceed cost of $20,000. Their estimate was in the $15,000 range. The reason it's a not-to-exceed up to $20,000 is because when you remove the concrete, we don't know what we're going to find beneath it. And they might have to bring in a lot more fill or suitable fill in that area. So we had them put a cap on the total cost, and will be a time of material expense after that, $15,000. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. Isn't that part of the upcoming project in the next couple of years?
So that is part of the upcoming project in the next couple of years. Doug Codson, DPW Director, and I talked about that. I inquired why we just don't push that off. In the world of construction, nothing is cheaper than it is right now. We know that with the Rossman Park neighborhood. Where in 2017, for us to do the south side of Rossman Park, it was about just a little more than a million, and now it's at 4.1 million six years later. So Doug Codson and Milbacher is recommending that we take advantage of the prices that we have today and fix this area right now and not wait until next year. Not wait until this project. And considering our current financing, we may not get to that Chestnut Street for seven, eight, 10 years down the road. Because money, just as we mentioned earlier in my statement, funding is that tight when it comes to capital improvement projects.
Okay, so you're, are they basically saying then that if this part gets done now, it won't have to be redone when they do that section?
Correct, yes.
Be left alone?
It will be left alone. We would only do the sidewalk replacement between City Hall and the new grass area, similar to what we do when we do road projects in the neighborhoods. We don't rip up the curb lawn area between the road and the sidewalk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What about the cost of just grinding that concrete down?
It's already ground down. The angle of that concrete right now does not meet ADA specs, higher than a 3% grade. And then it's an argument that I've used with multiple councils here on the quality of your investment in your public infrastructure. Can you always do something cheaper? Yeah, you can. Is that the best image that Allegan is going to put forth? Previous councils have decided that's not the best image they want to put forth.
Anything else for staff?
No.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve a change to PO 25-0801.
Make a motion to approve as presented by staff?
Thank you.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, to approve a change to PO 25-081, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Motion passes. 11E is Administrative Services. 11E1 is a request to approve accounts payable and payroll, and Councilmember Hooker, would you please take this one?
Yes. We are asking to approve accounts payable in the amount of $1,488,051.50, payroll of $124,963.94, for a total expenditure of $1,613,015.44. I make a motion to approve accounts payable.
Thank you. Can I get a support? All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor to approve accounts payable and payroll as presented, please state aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. All right, 11E2 is a request from Peter Ancoviac II to purchase a city-owned lot on Monroe Street with a parcel number of 51-105-148-00.
Thank you, Mayor Perrigo. A month or so ago, City Council received a letter from Mr. Ancoviac to purchase the vacant city-owned parcel along Monroe adjacent to JC Park. At that time, council, by consensus, said we're not interested in selling that parcel. However, after that meeting, Mayor Pro Tim Morgan and Mayor Perrigo requested that this be put on the agenda for an official vote. So it's a clear message on city council stance. I will remind council, your reasoning to come up with not wanting to sell that parcel back then is our master plan calls for the north side of Monroe to be public open space. So five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, the master plan calls for no houses on that side of Monroe and an open view shed to be created onto JC Park. But this does, it is recommended, or it's requested, City Council review it and then give staff direction on how to move forward.
You're wanting an official?
An official motion on rejecting the request to purchase it.
I have a question first.
Yes.
Do we, do we have an easement then on that property that goes into the park?
So the parcel lines, are you referencing the red lines on the north side of the image? So I would argue that the parcel lines you see up there may not be exact. Those are Allegan County GIS lines that are computer aid drawn, you know, by someone at the desk. So we always tell people that these lines are representative of potential parcel lines, but they are not in place of a property survey done by a land surveyor.
Any other questions of staff? All right, can I get a motion to reject the request to purchase parcel number 51-105-148-00?
Make a motion to reject the request.
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion amongst council? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. 11E3 is a discussion regarding the potential sale of a city-owned parcel on Low Street with a parcel number of 51-251-041-00.
Madam, I'd like to request to be excused for this item as a conflict of interest.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
All right, it's been moved and supported to recuse Councilmember, geez, I'm losing my mind, Westover? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, now that Councilmember Westover has left. Joel, do you have any additional information? I see that Tanya Schaefer is here as spokesperson for Tantric, who has expressed interest. If there's nothing from staff, I don't know, Tanya, if you had something?
Sure, I'm going to take over, Tanya, real quick. Thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to give council just a brief update on where we are. This started back in February 10th when we received a letter from Tantric Brewing Company to purchase this parcel. I had misspoke in the past in the letter submitted to council. It does suggest a purchase price of $1. It's been discussed at your March 10th and March 24th meeting with council members asking for some more information about this parcel that has been shared with council. I will let you know that after the March 24th meeting, city staff did receive an email from another private party stating their interest in purchasing this exact same parcel. And then on April 1st, they submitted an email letting us know that they are no longer interested in this Low Street property. You still have a request on the table in front of you from Tantric Brewing. There are several options that you have right now. You can either direct staff to begin the process to sell the property to Tantric Brewing. I will point out in your city charter, I believe it's Section 13-9, it stipulates the process to sell city property. We have to publish the sale for three consecutive weeks in the local paper. Then we have to hold a public hearing, no longer than five days after the last publication. That is something that we could do. You can also market the property to the public for a certain amount of time to receive bids, or you can choose not to sell the property like you did earlier this evening. I will let you know that I've been in communication with Mayor Pro Tim Morgan, who is not able to be here this evening. He has shared with me that it is his wish that council consider opening the sale up to the general public with a minimum bid requirement of $1,000. And I told Bill I would go ahead and share that with council because he does not have the ability to submit written communication to council this evening. Any questions for staff?
No.
I do. Is, is this the property with the exposed tanks, above-ground tanks?
There's not exposed tanks, but there is reports of contamination on the property. But I don't believe there's exposed tanks above ground. And I don't see any on the aerial photo that we see right there.
Then it must be right next to it.
It's in the general vicinity. I mean, there's a reason why that whole area is called Depot something, because the train depot went through there, so.
Yeah, I think I know what property you're talking about, Councilmember Walker, and I think it's from this image just to the, to the east, or to the west, excuse me.
Okay, okay. I mean, do we know what, has anyone looked into what is, used to be in those tanks? Or if there is anything in there that could make this even a worse situation?
No, the city hasn't done any, to our knowledge, any environmental studies on any of the properties in that general area.
The environmental study that proposes that there could be contamination there was done by AESA when they purchased the property from the city.
And they aren't able to provide that study to us. We requested that study. I will point out that across the street are residential homes, the Depot Hill condos. And I will also propose that right next to it is a single-family home that was constructed within the past three years, I believe. So there is residential houses both across and to the west.
Any other questions of staff? All right, so we have three paths forward, and I'm looking for a motion for one of those three.
I'd like to make a motion to proceed with selling it to them.
To Tantric?
Yeah.
For their requested amount?
How much did you request it for?
$1.
I would say that's a fair price considering that property.
And I would support that, I mean, based on what we heard of the value and the cost of remediation.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to direct staff to proceed with the procedures to sell this property to Tantric Brewing for their requested price of $1. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. All right, 11EF is a request to release a city easement on the property.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
Is it okay if you allow Patrick to rejoin?
Oh, I forgot. I'm just going, man.
And he's going to, you have to make a motion to recede him.
Yes.
Thank you. That was Parker that caught that, not me. I was ready to end the meeting.
Dale, are you getting him? All right, thank you.
And do we need to make a motion that he reenters first?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
Okay, I will make a motion to allow Councilmember Westover to return, please.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor of allowing Councilperson Westover back in, please state aye. Aye. Opposed, no. All right. All right, thank you, Councilperson Westover, for your patience. All right, now I'm going to move to 11EF is a request to release a city easement on the property at 147 Eastern Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located on Eastern Avenue between Low Street and Grand. Right now, I believe it's a vacant lot. The property owner would like to build a house. However, the city owns an easement over like two-thirds of it. When the city was doing a construction project a decade or so ago, they put a construction easement on it. I have inquired with both our Department of Public Works and our Water Utilities, that easement is no longer needed. I've consulted with our city attorney about the appropriate process to go forward on releasing this easement. He stated, you know, that we have to create a document. And so we are requesting that you approve this easement and direct the mayor and clerk to sign it. Any questions for staff?
All right, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we release the city easement at 147 Eastern Ave.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion amongst council? All right, seeing none. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. All right, now we're going to move down to Agenda Item Number 13, which is the second public comment of the evening. If you have any public comment, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Dana Sorew, 799 Main Street. The traffic issue is ridiculous. So what do we got to do to slow the traffic down? Then also, the city manager, Mr. Yellen, he, I was complaining wrong, and he people are going to accept that it's okay. He should be terminated. And then, and the law, Jay Gibson, that man should be terminated too. Plain and simple. We don't need to be living in this way. Ridiculous. That's all I got to say.
All right, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none. All right, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none. I will move down to Agenda Item Number 14, is Communications from the City Manager. Anything?
No, the only thing I would point out is, thank you to Leah Ward and Elegant Chapter of the Kalamazoo Folk Life Organization. Yesterday was the final concert at the Griswold Auditorium as part of their Cabin Fever reliever series. One of the goals for City Council was to increase the use of the Griswold Auditorium. City staff members Parker Johnson and Ryan Burza worked with Leah on orchestrating that program, providing sound. And then the Positively Elegant Group volunteers, which Councilmember Hooker is part of, volunteer their time to, you know, sell concessions as part of that as well. On average, there was probably about 60 to 70 people during those four concerts that came in on Sunday afternoon. So that was a really cool thing to, you know, just brings, breathe some more life into that building. We need more of those events. It's an expensive building to keep the doors open and the lights on.
All right, Agenda Item Number 15 is a roundtable discussion from the council and mayor. I'm just going to start off, and then we'll see which council member goes first, and who wants to take my question. So after Thursday's, last Thursday's budget meeting, we, you know, talked as a council, and a subcommittee was formed to look more into our budget and a shortfall of $500,000 a year on average that we need to find. And that subcommittee is made up of Councilmember Canales, Councilmember Walker, and Councilmember Zeder. And I believe you, you three met maybe this past weekend, and just wondering if you can give the rest of council and the public an update on your discussion.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the subcommittee, we met this past Saturday for the first time, and had a general discussion.
Oh, turn your mic on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So, our subcommittee met this past Saturday, and recognizing that it's a serious decision and requiring a thorough, thorough discussion, thorough investigation. So we came away preliminarily with that our, that our group is committed to look at all the data, financial, social, et cetera, develop the pros and cons. We want to expedite our visits to discuss with Sawituck Council, as well as Atsigo, and to see their, their experience. We are going to sit down with Tracy and delve into some of the budget items a little deeper.
And just for clarification, Tracy is Tracy Stahl, our finance director.
Thank you. And then we have suggested we either form another subcommittee with members of our police department, or add them to our subcommittee, but to try to either, try to come up with other options to tackle the budget shortfall. So that is what we have right now. Hoping to expedite that right away.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything else, Councilmember Walker, besides the update that you wanted to share tonight?
Oh, yeah, with Matt, you want to do that?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, okay. Coffee with council, Melanie, Councilmember Hooker and I. Matt Hauser had met with us the very first coffee we had, and he came back with a well-planned, investigated letter of his proposal to add 400 and, between 400 and 600 square foot homes. It, he just wants to do an, anyway, I don't need to get into that, because it's got to go to the zoning board, I believe, and I'm not qualified to talk on that. But he, I just discussed that that would.
Yeah, it would have to come in front of Planning Commission, anything, yeah.
Yeah, so, and he's planning on that, so.
Great.
Look for it.
Awesome, good. All right, Councilmember Zeder, would you like to go next?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Westover.
I'm all set, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Canales?
No, we're just going to try real hard to get this thing resolved. Besides that, I'm all set for right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hooker?
I just want to let everybody know that the coffee with council was not happening in April because of my schedule. It will resume in May. There was a suggestion that we do in evening, so it will be May 14th, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the library. So come on down, and unfortunately, we won't have coffee, but chat with Councilmember Walker and myself, and, you know, we like to try to bring that information back to the council. Thanks.
All right. Just trying to end on a positive note as much as we can. I know there's a lot of emotions in the room, and I totally understand. But just want to tell everybody that at this time, there are many exploratory, exploratory options that are on the table to offset the expenditures of the city, and nothing has been decided at this time at all. You know, that's why we formed a subcommittee, so we can dedicate, you know, three council people to look into this further, and then they can bring back information to us that they find. And it's not only looking, you know, at one department, it's looking across everything. So just want to end on that. So if there is nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:12. Thank you, everyone.